Welcome to the March 10, 2022, meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn and I call this meeting to order at 6:36 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting in person at Chicaring this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV for those who wish to view remotely. Please note that this meeting is also being recorded. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. And before I read the preamble, is there anyone who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please raise your hand if so.
Are we going to be, are we going to hear that though?
We don't have anyone in the waiting room.
Oh, it's coming off the, oh, it's coming off the Zoom.
Do you want me to wait?
No, I think, I think if there is no one here for community comments, we will move on with the agenda. I would note that if there, we don't have anyone in the Zoom meeting right now, Deb. If we did, then they would just need to transition over to the live stream. All right. Well, this is our public hearing meeting on the proposed fiscal year 23 budget, so we will kick off with our discussion of the budget.
Great. Sorry, Deb. Our technician.
Oh, no.
You're the call it's person. You're just taking. Okay, so we are excited to present the budget that you guys actually were reviewed last time you met, so there had been no changes. And this is actually the presentation that we shared with Dover Warren when we met with them also in late, oops. So the assumptions for us building our fiscal year budget are obviously regular school operations. I think for the short term, we'll be saying that, describing that as in-person five days a week. You know, that's something that we typically didn't have to say before, but we are saying it now and hopefully it will go away in a year or so. And we're looking at level enrollment. We provided to the committee the five-year projection and it does look like we're going to pretty much stay in the same enrollment arena that we are now. So we'll, obviously that can change from year to year, but projections are telling us that we're going to remain steady. We continue to follow the compliance with the town's budget guidance, which for Dover is level service, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about some of our additions for the year. And we continue to align our budget with our district strategic plan. And a couple of things I'll just highlight are the, sort of the core goals are innovative teaching and learning, health and wellness of our staff and students, that's some of our SEL component where we're adding this year, and also resource efficiency. And obviously with everything post-COVID, we'll continue to assess the needs of our students. But do you know that our short-term needs will not necessarily need to be addressed in your operating budget, but are rather covered by the ESAR and COVID-related funds that we have received and have several years to use? So that's a good safety net for us as we continue through this. Oh, I keep doing that, sorry. Deb, what did I do here?
Close that up the upper right.
Your mouse is a little.
It's almost cranky.
I feel like it might be an error.
What's doing? I put a script to it or something.
We're not recording.
Okay, what if you tell me when you want to click?
Okay, sure. Next, next, please, Deb. Perfect, thank you. So we always look at the Dover budget in two, sort of two distinct pieces, the in-district and the out-of-district. So the drivers, the budget drivers for your in-district, obviously payroll being the largest, it represents approximately 85% of your budget. Some things to keep in mind is that we do have contractual agreement increases in your contracts that range from two to two and a quarter across all of our bargaining units, knowing that in your educator contract, there is additional step and lane increases, which can range from four to 13%, depending on where the staff members are in the matrix. Fiscal year 23 is the final year of all of our contracts, so we will begin negotiations for fiscal year '24 through '26 in the fall. And then our staffing obviously is based on enrollment and our student educational needs. And I say that because you will see that we are increasing a special ed, us, teaching position due to our student educational needs. And this current year, we added two positions based on enrollment that were not in your fiscal year '22 budget, so you'll see that those were added permanently in your, well, for next year, for your fiscal year '23 budget. As we mentioned, student enrollment remains supportive of the 26 classroom sections that we had. We did ask add two sections post-budget for this year. Our current enrollment is 485. If we look at our projections, it's around 475. And we're, obviously we'll be shifting some of the grade sections as the cohorts are different sizes and we equate the staffing needs based on that. We continue to do our trend budgeting. We did see some increases this year in instructional software and transportation, and we'll talk about that when we look at that line item. We also were very cautious about trend budgeting this year, just based on how the end of '20 ended and how '21 was. We don't want to necessarily, we actually had savings in all three districts because operations were different, but we didn't want to reduce those amounts from our operating budget because it wasn't really true operation. So we were sort of cautious about doing trend budgeting this year. Deb, thank you. So on the out-of-district, obviously the budget driver there is placements. And so we're projecting 21 out-of-district placements in fiscal year '23 compared to our '26 that was budgeted in fiscal year '22. Just to remind people who are watching this presentation, the Dover school budget includes out-of-district costs for any Dover resident who's age three to 22. So although you're just an elementary school, you do have in your budget any Dover resident in that range. So that's just important, I think, to keep in mind that we sort of look at what it costs to operate Chicaring and then what it costs to take care of the Dover student residents who go out of district. So obviously, the net change in placements is resulting in a reduction in tuition costs and correspondingly, it also impacts our transportation costs. So this is where we sort of ended up for fiscal year '23. We're looking at an overall budget increase of $126. Now, you would, you would look at that and go, wow, but I think it's really important to look at the pieces. So your in-district did go up half a million dollars, but fortunately, your out-of-district went down half a million dollars. And so I think that's really important to keep in mind. It's not like we are level funding the school budget, it's just what's happening that's causing that. And we'll talk a little bit about the increase of the in-district as we, as we continue through the presentation. I always like to show the comparisons of where we've been in the previous years, so that you'll see fiscal year '22, fiscal year '21. You'll see that we're continuing to see a decrease in out-of-district. A lot of that has to do with the investment that we're making in programming pre-K through 12 across the district, and so that's actually a very positive thing to see. So here's just sort of the numbers that you can see, there's a lot of numbers on there, but it allows you to sort of see, you know, where we were a couple of years of actuals and then compared to this year's budget. If you look at your salaries and other compensation, you'll see that's what's driving your budget increase. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically about that, I have another slide. But just looking at your other educational expenditures, the increases there are predominantly in software. As you know, we've increased our dependence on curriculum and software. Some of it is classroom management and some of it's direct curriculum use. The other big piece of that is if you remember, in version 2.0, we added $12,000 for some one-time system upgrades for the website and for the budget, the financial system. So if that's basically a little bit of software and $12,000 of a one-time expense, other than that, you'll see it's all salaries that's driving your budget. So looking at the in-district staffing additions, so we looked at this in two ways. We looked at it in what was level service, so what did we have to add to keep our level, our services the same? And so that basically was two classroom teachers, .4 specialists to cover those new sections, two educational assistants to cover the new sections, and then we're adding the 1.0 special educator due to volume of IMPs in fiscal year '23. The first three items are already in your fiscal year '22 budget. That's why you see some red numbers when you look at your financials. The staffing additions that were due to student needs, which aren't necessarily level service but were increased needs of students, are your 1.0 combined math and SEL specialist that you're sharing with Pine Hill, .3 BCBA that we actually already have in this year's budget, as we do with the math and SEL specialist, a .5 adjustment counselor, that is a new add for fiscal year '23, and .25 floating nurse, which if you know, we added that position out of need, I think in mid-November, I believe it was, so we're already carrying that in our budget, but we, in our actuals, but now we're adding it to the budget. So if you look at the numbers, you can see that we did have a net increase in salary due to, due to the new positions. That on top of the 3.3 increase in COLA is basically your $500,000 that your budget So that is your budget in a nutshell. I will just add too, I don't have a slide in here, but you know, the town is looking at funding your capital that we put forward, and so you approved that back in December. And so that will be separately discussed by the capital committee of the town in any of the town meetings moving forward. But you know, that's another piece of funding that the town's doing for us. So typically, we'll see if there's any community questions at this point. If not, then you'll be able to close the public hearing. We'll go back to you guys.
All right. Any community questions? In that event, we'll turn it over to school committee members for questions. Is it reasonable to expect the trend with the out-of-district to continue? It seems to make a big difference in the budget, so is there any way of predicting it?
So a little bit, if you remember the chart that I gave, you can look at who is potentially set up to graduate next year. That could potentially be what's rolling off. And then obviously, we have the students that, once they turn 22, and those are typically the students that cost, or have higher costs. When they roll off, we see a big difference. So I'd like to try to give you where the pockets are so that you can anticipate what could be coming off. But Dover, I will say, is very volatile and, you know, for those, I think, been on the committee for a while, you'll see that we'll have some pretty significant swings from year to year. So it's really hard to say what's going to happen even next month. But I do think you can get a little bit of what could happen based on the categories that we break out for you. Right? If you look at your 12+, we have five students in that category, and that's almost a million dollars. So you do know that some of those students obviously are going to be aging out. So we just have to see if new students will take their place.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I thought I read or heard two different figures for the COLA. Was it two to two and a quarter on one of the first slides, but then I thought I heard 3.3%?
Because when you put it all together with the steps and the like, the step and lane changes, yes. That the average across all of our employment groups was 3.3.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Dawn, just to confirm, I know one of the, one of the things that we're most proud of here is the ability to keep our classes nice and small. And we have our range of 17 to 22 students in our class size policy. So the budget that's being put forth, just to confirm, still would put all of our sections in that approved range of 17 to 22 students across. It might, you might see some movement depending on how many incoming kindergarteners you have versus how many graduating fifth graders, but we're still looking at.
Across the different grades, it looks like we have enough to accommodate what's in our projections. We look at both the one-year and the three-year. And it, we appear to be in that range close enough now if something goes just a little bit the other way, you know? But I think our feeling is that we have probably an extra kindergarten section that may shift. We've got some ones that are moving around, but we'll definitely take a look at it that. And it's not out of our normal protocols to if the numbers creep up unexpectedly, that we will request still an added section. We won't run, we won't have sections that are not in compliance.
Which we actually did last year in two instances.
Exactly, exactly. So you, you don't want to do that, you don't want to put it in the budget until you sort of know. And fortunately, Dover has been very flexible with us to allow us to add that because of the way you do your budget with circuit breaker. You know, you still budget, you still control and manage the total line of your total budget, which gives us some leadway because you've got an extra million dollars in there theoretically. We don't ever go to try to spend that a million dollars, but we're not so tight to the bottom line that we can't add those staffing positions when we need them. Okay, thank you. And obviously, we consult with the town before we do that, but you know, we'll start looking at those numbers a little closer now that the budget's done, as we start rolling into, you know, the, the late spring, just as we do at both elementary schools, because there's a tendency for that to happen in that, because we're so small with the number of cohorts, it doesn't take much to throw you off.
Right. So Dawn, just for everybody, the circuit breaker million dollars in there is if somebody were to move in.
That's for, yeah, that's, Dover does that to protect themselves in case there are movements. So we don't have a, you know, a circuit breaker fund that some, some towns have because it's sort of built in to cover you there. And we've, we've dipped in some years, like one year it was like $400,000, that we had to dip into circuit breaker. So it, it does definitely come into play some years, but when it doesn't, it just flows back to the town as, into their free cash.
Other questions, comments?
No, thank you very much, Dawn.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dawn. All right. And so at this point, I think we take our vote.
You'll take your vote on the, on the final budget.
Exactly. Is there a motion to approve the FY '23 budget as presented this evening?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? We do not have to do a roll call vote because we're in person.
That was the excitement of Tuesday night, too.
Official, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Great.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Now Kathy, next up is the superintendent's report, so we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to start, and I know all of you received this, I would hope at home, a communication, not just from the superintendent. I was joined by our four principals at all schools, and we sent out a message to all families about the situation happening in Ukraine. And I just want to say again, heartbreaking violence and the conflict happening to the Ukrainian people in their homeland was the message sent to our school community. And I want everybody to know, again, we are committed to working with our students and our families, all students and families with empathy, you know, guidance and counseling if needed, and certainly using it with teachable moments for age-appropriate for our students. And I say that, and quite honestly, we did get a number of phone calls. So phone calls from families saying thank you, you know, referring kids, you know, I'm not sure, again, if people wanted to come forward, but we were there to support and again, we'll continue to do that. I had my principal's meeting, as I do every Thursday, and today, a member from the regional school committee had asked about where the school's doing anything to support, just a question, actually looking for a place to also provide any support if needed. So we do have some things happening, you know, throughout the district. Some of them are our older children. So again, I, I feel, again, we will keep paying attention and making sure that we're supporting our families in an appropriate way. And that brings me to your mask optional rollout, and I'm honestly calling it a non-issue. And I've been in every one of the schools. I started at the middle school, went over to the high school, and I could see at your high school in space where kids are collaborating, working together on projects, right as you walk in, in that lobby area there, there are kids masked, working with kids that were choosing to be unmasked. I walked into classrooms and I talked to teachers, a number of teachers said to me, there were reasons, you know, they might've had a cold. They felt that if a student was masked, if they were working closely in a one-on-one situation, as far as, you know, not being distant, they would, out of respect, you know, put that mask on and making sure, that they're also modeling that, that it is a choice. The little kids, I truly, I came to Chicaring, Dr. Ryaneman and I walked around, the kids are not missing a beat. I'm not sure what you're hearing at home, but I know we have our little signs up and I know there's been conversation, but it just feels like I, you know, I want to be very careful when I say, you know, it was the right timing or the right thing to do. We are not out of the woods. You know, we've been very fortunate, we've had very, very low rate of cases, but this week, we still had a few cases. So again, we will, you know, keep working and making sure that we, our goal was always to remain in school, five days a week, in-person learning, and to work with our health and hygiene, and are very experts, again, that I have said this so many times publicly, but I can't thank them enough for the time, for the research, you know, really a lot of very good discussions and, you know, hopefully, it just feels like we're headed in the right direction. So, and if you ask, I was in, at Pine Hill, I want to say, yesterday, and I started to really count heads. So if I'm in a classroom of about 21, there's probably five or six that are masked, and I thought the funniest thing was, when I was at Pine Hill yesterday, I had read there probably about a month ago, and I walked into that class, and one of the little girls looked and, you know, she, you know, you, I know you, you were there. And of course, I think with the mask off, you know, you don't even think about it, but all of a sudden, it's like, I think I might recognize you, but you had a mask when you came in. So, you know, it's just, hopefully it's a blessing for all of us. And so getting down to other communications, I updated you at the joint meeting, but I've had a couple of meetings with Dana Lanham going forward. We're looking at, and when we talk about a survey, we want to be very careful about the survey. We want to make sure, you know, the parents have options and selection. So we're getting really valuable information about how they want to be communicated, how many times. We're looking at newsletters, we're looking at progress reports or district reports. So right now, we're taking some time to really do our research and hopefully, before the end of the year, have some projects that we can share with you, which really was our goal. Also, I've met twice, and today, the executive team joined me, so Dawn, myself, Kate McCarthy, Beth McCoy, and I have certainly been talking on a very regular basis right now to keep her updated. And we met with the Collins Center out of UMass Boston to talk about, and I'm calling it the central office audit. So they want, as you can imagine, strategic plans, they talked a lot to Dawn about finances, organizational charts, job descriptions, looking at how they actually come in and have conversations. So of course, school committee is on there, so we will be requesting from each of the school committee, I think it was two members, so we'll, and, and we're, we're hoping that they're going to come into our district. This is the exciting thing about in-person. So we have Dr. Ann Wilson, who was a former superintendent in Sudbury, has worked with the Collins Center on superintendent searches, on this type of central office human resource audit. We also have Heather Mashad, who seemed to be leading our audit, and I said to Dawn, she's in good company, she has a background in finances. And really, you know, we, again, we have to understand the finances. I don't want you to think that they're going to come in projecting, you know, all of these positions that we need, but they're going to talk to us, I guess, about how to be efficient or to, you know, meet with the very people we serve. So I'm looking at Dr. Ryaneman, our principals, our assistants, our department heads, and making sure that the services that we provide at central office is allowing them to do their job in an effective way. So they wanted to get going right away, but you know, it's, it's something about the district, we have been busy from the minute I got here, July 1st. And I guess probably every district feels this way, but right now, we said to them, gee, maybe a week or two, because we're in the middle of principal search for the middle school, we're in the middle of an assistant superintendent search for the district. So we have people committed to so many things and so much time, and again, you know, things are going very well. But we're, we're hoping to, to meet, but, but we'll be finished probably by April 1st, the two searches, if everything goes well. So that is our hope right now. I also was really pleased to present to all of you, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, and I'm looking while I'm talking here. So I was part of the Educational Research Development Institute, and I was very fortunate, and I think a lot of this had to do with advocacy for equity in funding in my previous job, and I had an opportunity for the National Superintendent's Roundtable, ERDI, which is really a select group of superintendents from around the country. So at this point, I am considered being retired, a superintendent emeritus. So I joined them at a conference Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I think I was back on Tuesday, and I mean, we worked, and we worked in groups about looking at equity and how to work with all stakeholders to make sure that the very work you're doing really takes hold and becomes part and parcel of a district. So I was very excited to be one of the writers and to, and I want everyone to know, it says interim superintendent, and these are people from all over the country, from California, Washington, Oregon, Georgia, Arizona, Tennessee, Illinois, and Massachusetts, and it's Dover Sherbonne. So I was really proud of that and wanted to share that with all of you, and hopefully we'll share some of this information with the NYU team doing the, the audit. I also am having the opportunity tomorrow to join Monique Marshall-Veal. We are going to actually Gillette, and there is a conference for all Metco directors, Metco superintendents. I think they're looking at some of their protocols, processes, you know, their successes, looking at some of the challenges. So I am excited to be part of this work in the district. And I was mentioning at the region, I haven't seen the little ones, but I did have an opportunity finally to go over a morning last week and to bring, I wanted to bring donuts and junk and Monique would not let me, so I went with a tray of bagels and goodies from our favorite place. And the, the kids were great. The boys didn't really look up, they were busy doing, you know, activities and gaming and, and the girls were more open to discussion. And I will tell you, they are all so pleased to be part of Dover Sherbonne. And I mean, there was talk about, you know, things, you know, trying to come back and sometimes the distance, but you know, very happy with their friends that they've made. And this is during COVID, and I know previously, you had done an excellent job with opportunities for the kids to have play dates at homes if there was, you know, time in between on a, on a half-day for the little ones or for the older kids, probably athletes and, you know, but people do, you know, kids doing the drum, et cetera. So it was just, was a good feeling to sit down and to have a discussion, and I hope to be able to continue that going forward. Also, we had a meeting with our joint chairs for our three school committees, and a number of things came up, and I want you to know, it feels good to talk about, you know, upcoming agendas. So there was talk about sustainability, so we're planning that, I believe, for the 29th of April. And we're prepared to talk about what's happening in the district, some of the challenges and successes, our school start times, looking at the data. I'm actually working with our leadership team, the last time we addressed this was September 29th. So I think we all had to kind of refresh our memories on really what is good data this year. So it still is one of those years when you look at attendance, when you look at tardies, when you look at grades, certainly we can get survey information, so we'll also be prepared to talk to you. I think we're, and this isn't pushing it off, and we will have some information, but we want to take a look at what is, you know, data that is valuable for us to, to really look at. So we'll also be able to talk about that on the 26th of April. And also, we talked about the superintendent evaluation process. So normally, you put aside a couple of dates in April for that very reason with your joint school committee. Because of the situation with myself as the interim, Beth coming on as your new superintendent, what we thought we would do, and I reached out to Dorothy Presser and she was pleased, we were talking about a professional development. So that, and we talked about doing it in early June, that seemed to work for her also. Your election cycle will be over and we'll be able to spend some time, you know, talking about what the process is, you know, how we do goal setting, how it ties in with your strategic plan, which I'm sure is going to be part of the superintendent transition. So we're looking after graduation, which I believe is Thursday, June 2nd. So we thought that next week starting June 6th. So she was giving me a couple of dates. I know you do have some school committee meetings on the 7th and the 14th, I think, so I was trying to, to work around those dates. So that is, is happening, and that is my report.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Kathy. I know, I look forward to the discussions about sustainability and start times and... And as a school committee member who has never sat through a, or participated in a superintendent evaluation, the opportunity to participate in professional development is much appreciated. Do others have questions, comments for Kathy?
Maybe a brief comment. I was curious about the central office audit because I think that would help with the supervision evaluation process. And just that, is the audit going to be done before June or?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay, perfect. Just, I think that's great because, you know, I work in a larger district and I feel like every district kind of morphs into a structure based on population to a degree and goals. And it's great that you have the opportunity to visit, revisit the structure in light of, you know, where our projected goals are for the future. Appreciate that.
Dawn brought up a really good point today when we were talking, because one of the things they talked about, you know, when you talk about another community, looking at what they call like communities. So it's one thing to look at a like community that might have 2,100 students, 400 staff members, but also when you look at some of the communities where, again, when you check your finances and your efforts to make sure, you know, you are hiring highly qualified teachers, which is everybody's goal, but to look at some of those communities also. So it's going to be interesting when we look at our like communities. So these are the conversations that we're having. And when we mentioned the communication, so-called, you know, projects that we're working on, that is going to go into the next school year. And, but when you look at this audit, we fully expect that this will be done in time for, I would say sometime in late May, June.
Other questions, comments? Shall we move on to the principals' report from Dr. Reineman?
Thank you. Welcome. It's so nice to have you in the building.
Yes.
It's been a busy week. Parent-teacher conferences started this week. There was a lot of buzz, especially yesterday with our half-day, with parents in and reconnecting with teachers and discovering that their children are on the second floor now, not the first floor. And where is the classroom? So it was a little bit of a scavenger hunt at times yesterday, great fun. We are thrilled with the Respect the Choice campaign that Darren Buck put together for us, and Steve Hart took a picture of two of our students and cast them onto, onto this poster and they're all over the school. Like Kathy said, it's been smooth, thanks to a lot of work last week by our teachers and staff, working with kiddos to talk about families make choices. So it was, that went very well, so we're quite pleased with that. The Chickering Olympics wrapped up last week. If you didn't know, I'm not sure which rock you've been living under because it was, wow, it was big and exciting. And the children were broken into six teams across the countries, into six countries. And the Ms. Riordan posted the awards every morning, we played Olympics music and the announcements, and it's great fun. So super, super time. That wrapped up and we're into March Madness with our books. I don't know if you had a chance to hear any of them, mine has not come up yet. Next week. It's been fun because we have guest readers and the kids then listen to the books being read, and they're all selections from the library, the new pieces that we have to share. So it's great messages in all of them, of course. Placement has begun. As you are looking ahead to next year, so are we. So the optional parent, parent guardian input form has been made available in the newsletter as well. And we have kindergarten parent orientation at the end of the month, I'm so excited. Also, going to be in person, the Thursday, the 24th, pretty sure the date is 6 o'clock. So we'll have our new kindergarten parents only, not kiddos this time, come into the building, meet a bunch of the staff and then go tour the classrooms and get a feel for what kindergarten we expect to feel like in the fall. We are also congratulating Jean Root and her retirement from Chickering after 30 years. It's a bittersweet moment, she's had her last Olympics, so there was great fanfare there as well. We expect that the School of Arts Council will have a school improvement plan for your first read for the May meeting. Thanks to Colleen and crew, we had a really good discussion at the beginning of the week. And now it's just a matter of narrowing down our list of things to tackle for next year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
No. No, well, I want to just echo how happy I am that Ms. Riordan is able to retire on an Olympics year. Because my fifth grader was psyched about the Olympics this year. He was asking his ninth grade sister how many Olympics she got to do at Chickering and talking about a lot. And I know Ms. Riordan made a big impact on all of my three kids. I remember when we did the school committee visit to Chickering before the pandemic, seeing signs in the gym on sportsmanship and teamwork. And I feel like those skills are critical and really ingrained in kids through the fun activity of play and that happens in P.
Yeah. I have to, I have to echo that. The character building that happens there is amazing. And my son was in tears when he heard that she was retiring. He was inconsolable, actually, for a bit, and I had no idea he had those feelings for the gym teacher, but she's, she has, she's larger role than, than just P. So, yeah, we are so appreciative of her. She is much beloved and for very good reason, and she will be sorely missed and leave very big shoes to fill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, moving to the warrant report.
Your monthly report, just showing you their bills that were paid and how many pieces of paper Mark had signed. And moving on to your financial report, as you know, I do a running report and only put in bold what's new information. So you have to look really hard to find a little bit of bold that's actually in this month's report. And it's basically that we thought we were fully staffed in our custodial realm, but we, someone didn't work out, so we do have an open position. We're hopeful that we will be able to secure a permanent person soon, but just know in the interim, we do hire outside service. We have too many spots open across the district to continue to make our, have our staff do overtime. So we have filled all of our spots as of on and off, but all completely, starting February 28th. So to give all of our guys just some downtime not to have to be doing overtime. So I think the school looks great. You know, we've been very pleased with Joel Sterling, who's taken over as interim head custodian. I was actually spent my morning here and I feel like he's a little mayor. All the kid, I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible. So like, you know, Jean serving more purposes of just a gym teacher, I feel like he's taking on a much larger presence here than just the head custodian. So that's very, very great to see in Chickering. And I will just point out that we will not, if you look, there is a lot of red on your financial statements, but at the end of the year, we'll make sure that your total in-district operating is not red, but it'll be probably zero if we continue to run that negative balance. Because remember, we sort of said we were going to use ester funds to cover some of the SEL new components that we added. And it's in, at our responsibility, I feel, to make sure that we don't eat into circuit breaker for some of those costs that we can take care of in other ways. I was reading my report and, you know, it's funny how quickly times change, but I was talking about the fuel, the oil bid price. In fiscal year '22 was, you know, $2.15 and that we were going to have a savings because the budget was based on a conservative price of $2.60. So I will have to say the oil bid this year could be interesting and we may see some negative on that line item next year. So we'll just have to see. I know from my own home what I've been paying recently, so it's just amazing to read that and see how quickly something can change. But we'll, we'll, May is usually when we do our tech oil bid. Sometimes we try to time it, I think one year we actually moved it up and we're able to lock in, believe it or not, $1.43, I think was two years ago. So my partner that I usually bid with is Holliston, and so he, you know, will decide when we ask tech, tech actually runs it for us, if it makes sense to hold off. You know, there's, there's ways that we can do this. So we'll, we'll definitely have to take a look at that this year, but just made me think about that. But basically, you're holding steady from what we've been reporting, at least for the last couple of months in your financial statements.
So do we lock that in for a year? So we set it and then a couple of months from now?
Yeah, and then it's locked in for a year. Yeah, yeah.
On the, on the custodial services, is that a savings or to have the outsourced custodial services or does it cost us?
It costs us more, yeah. But we also don't have them work as many hours, so we sort of balance that. So, you know, they kind of come in and do it a little faster. And so we, they don't work an eight-hour day, they work a six-hour day. And if we, we don't have them work on any break weeks. And so we, we keep that as tight as we can, just to get the, to get the work done, but not to, we'll probably end up with a net savings because we've had so many positions on and off. And again, with the retirement of Steve Anarado, there's savings there. So in total, we'll be okay, but if, at the end of the day, it is more costly per hour for the outside service.
Other questions for Dawn on the financial report?
I wanted to just say you have your special revenue revolving fund statement of December 31st. We didn't have it ready for you at your January meeting, so it's a little bit late. So your next will be March 31st in your May meeting.
Well, thank you very much, Dawn. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the annual school committee vote on Massachusetts' school choice law. Kathy, are you going to give us an overview there?
Yes, so it is required under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12, it requires your local school committees to vote annually as to whether or not the district will participate in school choice. So your school committee has historically voted not to participate in school choice. I think a lot of that is, you talked this evening about your class sizes and really at this point have, have very little extra space. You hear us talk about watching, you know, the class sizes during the summer months as people are registering or moving into the district. So again, the recommendation is to continue with your historical vote of not to take part in school choice. And we have to let the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education know before June 1st each year of the vote of the school committee.
Sorry, can I ask what that is?
So school choice, and again, Dawn can talk about the financial piece, I understand it clearly from the district I came from. So it allows other towns that surround you to be able to apply for a position. You, you could say, we have positions in grade four, we're going to take 10 students in grade four, you know, throughout the district or at the high school, we have so many positions. So the person would be able to, you know, choose to come to Dover Sherbonne. And we receive from the sending district, and it's what, five?
About $5,000. It might be, it might be a little higher, but it's typically about $5,000. So school districts do it because if you can do volume of it, right, it helps them fund other things. And so, but once you allow someone to, to choice in, then you have them for the rest of, if they want, they're in for the rest of their school tenure. So smaller districts typically don't participate. Now Dover residents can school choice, they can go to some of our surrounding districts who do participate, NADA, Holliston, a lot do participate in school choice. So it's just a way to, if you don't, you know, to have other options in a public school setting.
Thank you.
But our, just to compare sort of the, the money that the sending district would pay our district to have the student attend school here versus the money that we typically spend per student, can you give us a sense?
So you're about 18, I would say 18,000 is an average, 18,000 to 19,000 is your per pupil expenditure on an annual basis. So, you know, it's not cost effect, we don't have an open seat that it's like fixed cost versus variable cost.
Whereas if other districts that you're pointing out might maximize the class size up to the legal limits of the room. So if they have extra space, those extra dollars are incremental extra dollars.
It's a great explanation because if you're a district, maybe you have 15 in a first grade and, you know, you can go up to, let's say, 20. You've already hired that teacher. So they look at that and for many districts.
And that's, and that's a good source of revenue for a lot of school districts. Yeah.
Other questions about school choice? All right, so I think that, that we do, we do vote on this. Is there a motion to vote in the negative on school choice in keeping with our past practice? Colleen Burtz, a move? Second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any questions, discussion? All right, moving on to our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which consists of our meeting minutes from January 25th, 2022. Did anyone have any comments, corrections, questions concerning the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mark Keely, same move.
Second?
Colleen Burtz.
Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent, thank you. And for members' information, we do have the minutes from the regional school committee meeting of December 7th and the Sherbonne School Committee meeting of November 16th. Next up, are there items that members would like to propose for our next agenda of our Dover School Committee, which would be May 16th is the next time this group meets together. We have joint school committee meetings in between, but this group meets next on the 16th of May.
Keep in mind, I think that's a Monday, we always meet on election night so that we can keep all the existing members for that, for that meeting.
Oh, I didn't realize that that was Monday. And that that's the reason behind it. Thank you for that perspective, Dawn. Okay, great.
Eight o'clock that night when the polls close.
I already think my heart beat faster.
Membership changes. Yeah, yep. Yep, so we, we, yeah, that's always sort of been Dover's because it's, if we waited, it'd be May 17th and you have stuff that's nice to be able to wrap up with, your committee members.
Sarah, one, probably with the timing of that one, it probably doesn't make sense, but I don't know where we put potential future for the next meetings, where we put those. Can we add an agenda item for future meeting now or do we?
Wait beyond.
Can certainly, can certainly oppose it.
So one thing that I thought would be good would be to get a report out from either superintendent or principal on sort of our current policies for active shooter, active shooter drills and what we're doing for those. I've just been seeing a lot of reports that there are potentially new ways of not necessarily doing active shooter drills, but more just teaching safety in the classroom and teaching first aid that have been potentially more effective and less traumatizing, especially at the younger ages. So just curious, I don't even know exactly how we produce them today, so I think a report out on that could be helpful.
Very good.
Thank you, Jeff.
We just had this discussion today at our principals' meeting.
So perhaps it's timely. Well, Kathy, I'll work with you to talk about when that makes sense in the flow of our, our meetings. All right, I think that brings us to time for adjournment. There a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.